Good evening, everyone. I am calling to order the March 17th City Council meeting and happy St. Patrick's Day. As a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings and both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. So the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you'd like to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, universal in liberty and justice for all.
The next item of business today is special business, and it's ID 1808, the Arbor Day Proclamation, and I'd like to invite Urban Forest Supervisor Dan Hints to the lectern. So whereas in 1872 Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day will be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas the anniversary of the holiday and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees produce life-giving oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, beautify our city, increase property values, and enhance economic vitality, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas the city of Issaquah is an active Tree City USA designee for 32 years, and the city of Issaquah celebrates Arbor Day year-round with many events to enhance and expand our tree canopy, and whereas the city of Issaquah is celebrating its annual Arbor Day, Saturday, April 5th, 2025. Now therefore, I, Mary Lou Polly, the mayor of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim that Issaquah celebrates Arbor Day and carries that spirit through our activities, policies, and priorities all year long. I urge all citizens to join in this celebration and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to create a healthier community and promote the well-being of future generations. And Dan, with our city team, is going to receive the proclamation and say a few words. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Thank you, council. This is really exciting. This is my third year getting to be here to accept the Arbor Day proclamation, which is crazy it's gone by that fast. But as Mayor Polly mentioned, our 32nd year as a Tree City USA community. So for a little context, if people aren't aware, Arbor Day Foundation oversees this award, and then at the state level, it's usually Department of Natural Resources or some equivalent, so Washington DNR kind of does the initial review here in our state. We are one of almost 100 communities in the state that have this recognition. Last I checked, there was about 95 or 96, and we have the eighth-longest ongoing streak, which is pretty impressive. So only seven other communities that have been receiving this reward for as many years as Issaquah has. So I think that's really cool, something we should really be proud of. And as we mentioned, lots of really great opportunities to come out and get involved in this work. Obviously, very timely after the bomb cyclone in November, but even so, you know, this is ongoing work that is really important to, you know, achieve our tree canopy goals, make sure we have a healthy, sustainable urban forest, and also engage the community in that work, but also the, you know, kind of education and community building that goes around with getting out there, planting trees, pulling weeds, doing all the stuff that goes into making sure we have a healthy urban forest. So just want to make a couple plugs real quick. As you heard, April 5th is going to be our city Arbor Day, so part of our Tree City USA recognition is having an annual Arbor Day event, so that'll be at Confluence Park from 9:00 a.m. to noon. Would love to see anyone there. We're going to be replacing about 15 to 20 larger boll and burlap trees, some of them one-for-one, trees that we lost in the windstorm, some of them nearby but not in exact locations, and we'll be actually kind of adding to some of the maintained areas of Confluence Park with the really cool new diversity of trees. That will be kind of our last planting event of this season before we kind of pick up in the fall season again, and so far to date, we are actually over 3,000 trees put in the ground. One of the really cool events we just had this past Saturday was planting a Miyawaki forest with Issaquah Trails Club. So if you have a chance to go along Northwest Dogwood Street at Issaquah Creek, not more than a few blocks away from here, you'll see about 600 new native plants and trees put in the ground, over 30 different species. Miyawaki Forest is named after a Japanese arboriculturist who really kind of focused on urban areas, degraded soils, restoring those soils, restoring native plants, and really engaging the community in that process. These forests are a little denser, they usually kind of pocket small forest and really help sequester carbon really quickly, create habitat, and like I said, really in places where the community can come engage and interact with these sites, which we think is going to be really cool, and kind of a high-visible site along Dogwood where we had neighbors all week telling us how much they were, well, first of all, curious what was going on, and then as they kind of started to see plants come out and go in the ground, we're very excited. So that was one of our kind of tail-in planting events. Like I said, April 5th Arbor Day, a couple other small events that are on our Green Issaquah calendar, so encourage anyone here tonight or listening to come check that out, and we would love to plant trees with you here the rest of the winter and then starting again in October. So yeah, thank you so much for having me.
So what could I possibly add? Dan is such an advocate for our forests and our trees, but if Sam is number one in town, the trees are number two, and not that far behind. So Dan, I'd love to get a picture with you.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Of course, yes, yes.
The next item on our agenda this evening is ID 1824, the 2025 Transportation Advisory Board Work Plan, and we have some members here. I'd like to invite Senior Transportation Planner Thomas Valdrees, Transportation Advisory Board Chair Julia Mydel, and Vice Chair Tom McDonald to present this item.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, members of the council. Appreciate your time tonight. I'll be presenting on the TAB work plan. So again, yeah, my name is Thomas Valdrees, Senior Transportation Planner. I'm also happy to say I'm also the TAB staff liaison. So first time for me doing this, but it's been great. Working with TAB has been wonderful, and we've developed a work plan for the year that we'd like to talk to you about. So little brief introduction, the Issaquah Municipal Code does require the TAB to meet with the council prior to adoption of the work plan, so this is unique to the TAB. The work plan is a non-binding sort of list of topics that the TAB will be covering over the next 12 months or so. So really briefly, in front of you on the screen is the work plan. There are several items that we'll be covering this year, various action discussion and informational items. We also plan to meet and have a joint board meeting with the Equity Board in October. Various topics will be brought throughout the year, and there are several scheduled items as well as some potential items. These are items that are more flexible in nature, given, you know, project timelines in the back half of the year, and can be seen on the second page here. So these highlighted areas are the potential dates that have not yet been solidified. So with that, I'll just maybe turn it over to the TAB chairs. We have Jillian and Tom. They'll talk a little bit about the TAB, and then we'd be happy to field some questions and receive council feedback.
So do I need to correct that, Jillian? Is it co-chairs, or is it?
It is chair and vice chair.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you, Thomas, for presenting that. You've been a great TAB liaison for these first couple of months. So my name is Jillian. I'm the Chair of the Transportation Advisory Board. Last year I was here, I was the Vice Chair, and there's also some change on the other side. So I'm mostly reintroducing myself, but introducing myself formally in this capacity to at least one of you. So I've been on the Transportation Advisory Board since 2021, and then became Vice Chair in 2022, and then became Chair last June. And I will highlight, you know, just as last year, I highlighted the equity portion. I'm really excited that, you know, we are doing some follow-up for that and really engaging with the Equity Board and really diving into that equity data for October. And so I'm really excited about that joint meeting that we're doing. A couple of other updates that I'm particularly interested in is the Climate Action Plan, and really engaging in some updated language for that as well. And I'll highlight that I'm also part of the work, the task force that's going into effect for the overall ICAP update. And so really interested in that. TAB is really interested in that as well. And then all the Central Issaquah stuff, I think is really exciting with station area planning and really focusing on that as well. So those are just a couple of the things I'm interested in, and I'll give it to Tom to discuss some other things of interest.
Good evening. I'm Tom McDonald. I'm the co-chair of the Transportation Advisory Board, and actually been on the board since its inception, so sometime as far as developing the original plan, and then as we look at meetings now focusing in on specific items. One of the things that we're doing, like as Jillian was mentioning, is as we look at these items, we're also trying to keep our attention within the goals of the Transportation Advisory Board and the Mobility Master Action Plan, and not to wander off to on-site challenges, we're trying to focus in on those items. So each TAB meeting is focused on those, as I mentioned, and the primary goals within the plan are the improved mobility within Issaquah as it is, prepare for growth, and think about how growth is going to happen, and how that's going to impact multimodals of transportation, whether it's biking, walking, transportation, transit, rail eventually coming in, better connection within Issaquah, reason, connectivity within the different areas between here, South Lake, up on the Highlands, promote environmental sustainability, mobility, part of that is leverage regional investments and prepare for light rail, and how that's going to change travel patterns and travel habits coming into Issaquah in the future. And again, looking at budgets and investing wisely, as we look at the TIP program, we look at that annually as far as the projects coming up, and which ones might be the better focus for what can be done with the dollars that we have, understanding that dollars may or may not change with current progress and current federal funding as it comes. And then the other part is anticipate transportation, or transformation. That's everything from technology, car type, car travel, modes of transportation, changing modes and stuff. And so as we're looking at these projects, trying to incorporate within the framework of what, of how we're looking at those, so that's all I have. If open for any questions that you guys might have, so.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any questions on the work plan for the TAB members? Or Thomas, go ahead. That's one behind. Paul?
Thank you very much for being here with us. It seems like you've kind of nailed down some of the most important priorities to talk about over the year. Street standards is certainly on our minds right now, climate work, equity work, I'm glad that's showing up here. I'm just curious if we feel there's a need to have a discussion around microtransit options depending on what happens with Metro Flex.
Yeah, that's a great question. In our Mobility Action Plan, we are looking at microtransit. We're hoping to look at that in like 2026, '27 as funding becomes available. But you'll recall, you know, this is a topic that we have some control over, that council has some control over, but also we are getting our service through King County Metro, so future discussions on that, and, you know, we'll see what the future looks like.
Council President?
Thank you, and thank you for this. I love seeing what you guys are going to work on, giving us a sense of what's coming back to us at that point. I noticed that some things are listed as discussion, some things are listed as information. Is there a different intent in how you would engage? I imagine with such an engaged group that there's likely to be feedback on all of the items, but how do you differentiate between those and what should be our expectation of what's coming out?
Yeah, great question again. So discussion items, there will be specific questions that will be asked of the TAB. Informational will be, you know, will be just, you know, general feedback will be, you know, discussed. But yeah, certainly the TAB loves to ask questions, we love to answer those, so there's going to be a healthy dialogue with all the items. Did you want to add something?
I'll just add, like in terms of the distinction between discussion versus information, I would say that a couple of years ago, we kind of switched or, you know, transformed the general agendas of these TAB meetings to be more discussion-focused. You know, prior to about 2022, and talking to a couple of council members here, we were really just getting a barrage of informational items and not necessarily the option to contribute. And after about mid-2022, we really transformed our conversations to be more, you know, we discuss one or two things, maybe three, but two things usually, and really focus in on those during our meetings. And so that's kind of the evolution that we've had, kind of more into that discuss, you know, discuss, discussion-focused topics, yeah.
Thank you, Jillian. Are there any other questions? Well, I think on behalf of the council and myself, we just want to thank our community volunteers for stepping up and doing this important work. Many people think you are paid professionals. We know that you come and give up your time to do this because you care about your community, and we appreciate it. Thomas, did you have anything to close us out?
That's all I got. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Great. Thank you. The next item is ID 1804, Boards and Commissions, the 2025 work plans, and our city clerk, Tisha Geezer, is here to present this item.
Hi, City Council. Tisha Geezer, City Clerk, and you just heard from the Transportation Advisory Board, one of our 13 boards, and they have a unique provision in the municipal code that requires that they discuss their work plan with the city council before approval. But I'm here to acknowledge that our 12 other advisory boards have also been working on their work plans, they've approved them in the first quarter of the year, and so those were included in your council packet tonight. As you may recall, this is something we started doing last year out of a desire to bring some standardization to the groups and have them thinking in that 12-month increment about what the year holds. I think it also hopefully is helping them and their staff liaisons to sort of manage their time. So you'll see those in your council packet. I'm not prepared to answer specific questions on the work plans, but certainly if you have questions about any of them, you are welcome to reach out to the city and let us know, and we can work on getting you answers. If you have any general feedback or general questions about the work plans or how they're being approved or anything like that, I'm happy to do my best to answer your questions, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Clerk Geezer. Are there any questions about the process, not necessarily the specifics? Not seeing anything. Thank you very much. Thank you for your work on this. It's been ongoing. It's been much appreciated. The next item in our meeting this evening is audience comments, and members of the public may address the council at this time in person or virtually, and those who signed up in advance will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat. If you're in the room, and I'm not seeing, oh, I see Connie, yep, we do have some members of the public in the room this evening. I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments this evening?
No, Mayor, but we do also have a few members of the public with us virtually, but no one has signed up in advance.
So I guess Connie, I'm looking over your way to see if you're going to raise your hand for public comments, and then I'll go through the, in case somebody online decides to speak after you speak. Okay, come on up, and I'm just going to go through those guidelines for those making comments tonight. You're invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to Issaquah's programs, projects, services, grants, or events. Comments related to political campaigns are not permitted. Please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals, and while this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. If those that are online with us choose to join in and raise their hand, when you are recognized online, you can unmute your microphone. We have one member in the public here who will be speaking at the lectern this evening. State your name, address, relationship to the city, speak clearly, and pause frequently. Please limit your comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually and do decide you'd like to speak tonight, but you're not able to connect, we are still going to have to move along with the meeting. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted, and public comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. The city takes comments seriously, and we thank you for taking the time to address us. So if we have no one signed up, we have called Connie up to the podium. Go ahead.
Hey, I'm Connie Marsh, live up on Squawk, and I have sent you a flurry of emails. Sorry, I sort of hesitate to speak when I send you a flurry of emails, but I never really know if everybody has time to read things. So email number one was, I spent 10 hours at a school board retreat, and there was no public comment allowed, so I got a lot of work done. And the school board was actually, this is, this is the most I've liked the Issaquah School Board in the last six months. They were civil, they were thoughtful, they asked good questions. One of the most striking days was a day when I think out of two hours, I didn't understand a single thing that they were talking about because of the jargon that was used, and they didn't provide any of the information to the public in advance of the meeting. And so instead of teaching, or teachers, they used the word pedagogue. And I'm, you know, as yet, I have not found a person who actually knows the dictionary definition of pedagogue, and so it is teach and teacher. So I was, I was confused as to why you would use that terminology when you could say teach or teacher. And it is the first time in a very long time, I have been in front of a group where I don't know the lingo at all, and I'm trying to hear with no support whatsoever from any paperwork or advance. And I'm thinking that that is what the typical citizen feels like when they come into one of you all's meetings. I don't feel it so much because I've been doing it too long, and I know all of your initials and acronyms and words like pedagogue except for city-style. So I would say, again, try to be extra careful about the terminology and what you all think is totally understandable, because I feel like two hours, I was just pedaling, right? And it was very uncomfortable. It was uncomfortable for 10 hours, but it was really uncomfortable for two. So then the next thing I'm going to do, which is, I thought pedagogue frankly meant sort of preaching from a higher platform, but it doesn't seem to have that connotation in the dictionary, it's just teaching. And so this feels like being my definition of a pedagogue, because I'm going to talk about policy, strategy, and code, and the different levels there. You guys are used to policy, right? It's up here, it's fluid, you can move it around, and it's, it's an idea of what you might want to do. And then you have your strategies, and you've honed those down, and you say, okay, within five years, we want to do a certain grouping of things. And those aren't really set in stone, we're trying to do them, but the way you do them is loose. And then you have code, and code is law. Code is shells, if there is a shell, then it's law that you shell, right? And so that is just so different a level than council usually has to do, that when you see code language, that you sort of want to fidget with it because you're thinking, well, this is like most language. But code is law, and so if you don't do what that code says, then you can create precedence for whoever comes behind you who doesn't want to follow that particular code, and it tends to allow that to happen. So you do have to be a lot more careful with code language than strategic plan or comprehensive plan language, which are more fluid. So hopefully that didn't sound too high in the instep there, it's just that vacillation between in the gears and up to policy, it's hard to decide where you are on that hierarchical structure. Oop, on that ladder. Thanks. See? Thanks.
Nope. Okay, start that over. There is no one else in the room, and nobody else online indicating a desire to speak, so that will close this portion, this will close audience comments. But I do want to thank our testifier this evening for talking about her attendance at another agency retreat and the importance of elected officials using understandable speech when the public is participating. And if there is any time during, after, before, after a meeting or during that you wish to contact your council, you can always submit your comments to them at citycouncil@issquahwa.gov. The next item of business this evening is the consent calendar, and I do not have any remarks on any items on the consent calendar, but I'd like to see if the committee chairs have any. Councilmember Mertz?
Yes, pardon me. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Services Safety and Parks Subcommittee met on February 25th and discussed what was at the time COM 0089, the Flock camera system. There isn't any specific proposal ready for review, so number of cameras, locations, types of cameras, et cetera, that's all TBD. But we did get a staff presentation, our comments included generally being in favor of the proposed camera system, felt the system would provide another level of security for the community, system appears to be reasonably priced, we've urged staff to be sensitive regarding potential privacy issues, and also to perform outreach to groups that may have concerns and get ahead of any rumors or whatnot about the system. So basically, the net-net is that the committee recommended that staff move forward with developing a purchase and implementation plan. The administration will be pursuing grant funding for the Flock camera system, and will return to the city council if additional non-budgeted resources are needed.
Thank you, Committee Chair. Are there any other committee chairs who would like to share an update on something on the calendar? Well, thank you very much. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Not seeing any indication. Would someone like to make a motion? Council President?
I move we approve the consent calendar as distributed.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I'm not seeing any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously, 6-0. Did I mention that Councilmember Ray had an excused absence this evening? Okay. Already forgetting. Okay, the next item of business is regular business, 2025 Proposed Docket of Comprehensive Plan Amendments. The request before council this evening is to approve, and I would like to invite Assistant Planning Director Stephen Padua to the podium. Welcome, Stephen.
Thank you, Mayor Polly, and good evening, members of city council. Give me one second to connect. Okay, tonight, we are going to talk about the proposed 2025 docket for the Comprehensive Plan Amendments. Just a little background information about the docket, it's a state-required process for the community to holistically review Comprehensive Plan Amendments before the administration actually pursues them. And so the approval of the docket is actually approval of the list of potential amendments, not the actual individual amendments themselves. And so to help with that decision process, there's criteria provided in code, and there's two different sets of criteria. The first set of criteria identifies that any amendment that meets any one of these individual items in the criteria are deemed appropriate to be on the docket list. That includes requests related to rezones, any requirements from state law, or any technical area that the administration is trying to fix. And if an amendment doesn't meet any one of those criteria in the first set, then it must meet all of the criteria in the second set, and I won't go through each of them, but I will go through them when I'm going through the docket list. The Planning Policy Commission reviewed the docket back in January 9th, and then held a public hearing on January 23rd, where, when the commission voted to recommend approval of the 2025 docket as proposed. And then the Planning Development Environment Council Committee met on March 4th. 1110 and 1337 to incorporate or allow middle housing types in our land use code. This project is a part of a state requirement to comply with those state bills, and so this docket item complies with that first set of docket criteria. The second item on the docket list is the proposal to amend policies to allow co-living housing in compliance with House Bill 1998. This is in compliance with the first set of docket criteria as deemed appropriate to be on the docket list. The third amendment is actually two parts, and that is to update the land use map designation. The first part of this is proposal to remove community facilities as a land use designation. This does not meet the first set of docket criteria, and so we evaluated the second set of criteria. And looking at criteria A, we believe, the staff believes that this proposed amendments improves process improvements in efficiency around managing public resources. Looking at criteria B, we do, the staff does not believe that this amendment raises any land use or policy issues. Looking at criteria C, staff believe that this amendment supports changing conditions as it relates to facilities planning, a major effort that's been ongoing for the last several years. And then for the last criteria D, this amendment does not conflict with any local, county, regional, or state goals and policies. And for that reason, we find that it complies with the second set of docket criteria. The other part of the update to the land use designation map is to look at the Food and Clothing Bank site as part of a rezone request, and for that reason, it complies with the first set of criteria to be on the docket list. And the last proposed amendment is to update the transportation element, and that's related to the ongoing effort to update concurrency to comply with House Bill 1881, and that is to incorporate multimodal level of service in the comprehensive plan. And for that reason, it complies with the first set of criteria to be on the docket. For reference, this is the current site of the Food and Clothing Bank, which is currently designated as community facilities land use, and the proposal is to change it to retail. And for your reference, the map on your screen shows all the community facilities sites throughout the city. For next steps to the docket list, if it is approved tonight, each of the items on the docket list will go and move forward as their own individual projects that will be reviewed by the Planning Policy Commission, as well as the council committee, prior to being reviewed by full council at the end of the year as part of the comprehensive plan amendments to be adopted. And the administration recommends approval of the 2025 docket of the comprehensive plan and land use designation map amendments as proposed. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Council, questions? This is Councilmember Hall.
Yeah, thank you. So you added a bit more context around one of the criteria for the community facilities bit, the 2C, the one around have conditions. What was it? Amendment addresses significantly changed conditions. Can you speak to that again? Because the memo said, the memo said there was no change in conditions, so I just wanted to kind of get at that potential contradiction there.
In the memo, we were trying to cite specifically to the criteria that there's no specific change in conditions, but we were trying to address the ongoing conditions that might change as part of facilities planning, and looking at the example being the Food and Bank, or Food and Clothing Bank, and the sudden need to want to sell the property and having to wait an entire year to go through a comprehensive plan amendment to rezone the property as part of that sale. And so we were trying to address that issue that has been raised by facility staff.
And I forgot to ask you for your report, Chair. If you would like to also do your report at this time, and that may generate some additional questions from those that are not on your committee.
Yeah, sure. Well, Stephen captured it very well. The committee agreed with the majority of the docket, proposed docket amendments, that that should go through and be put on the docket. It was just this community facilities item where we were a little bit mixed, but the majority of the committee did think that it met the criteria and should move forward. I was the minority in that, just thinking that maybe we should have a little bit more discussion about it, because it didn't seem to fit the criteria, just in my mind, but the committee recommended moving forward with it.
Okay. Did you have additional questions? And we'll also open it up to every, the others as well, but go ahead.
Yeah, I did have a follow-up, if that's okay. So how should we think about what significantly changed conditions even means? Like, what, how do we think about that as a criteria? That's kind of this interesting abstract one.
I mean, typically, the criteria is being applied to privately, private requests for comprehensive land amendments, and so changing conditions in land use, changing conditions in any development, economic development, that's typically how it's been applied, but for, in this situation, we're applying it to changing conditions, and nothing specific as it relates to facilities planning. And so it really is trying to relate to any conditions that might impact the, what the amendment is actually being directed at.
It doesn't look like it's clear in your head.
No, I think I understand, I understand now what staff rationale is around changing conditions versus changed conditions, and how we're interpreting that. I think it's interestingly broad, and it almost brings like a policy element to what the criteria is. So I think there'll just be some discussion had around that one. But thank you, now I understand what the staff.
Any other questions on the docket? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Chair, would you care to make a motion?
So I will move to amend the motion to remove docket, oh, whoops.
One second. We need a main motion first? Yeah, main motion.
I have it here somewhere. My bad.
And if you want to, the council president, property already has it pulled up.
Oh, go ahead, sure.
I move to approve the 2025 docket of the comprehensive plan and land use designation map amendments.
There we go. Okay, and is it okay, Council President, if we allow the second to discuss the motion, and perhaps a potential amendment to the motion?
Yeah, then thank you. I will offer an amendment. I move to amend the motion to remove docket item number 3A, to remove community facilities and community facilities privately owned from the land use designation map.
Is there a second? And just a suggested practice is you can second it just to discuss it. It doesn't necessarily mean that it is in support, but you can also not second it. It's your choice. Councilmember Mertz.
I will second for the purpose of discussion.
Great. Go ahead, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you very much for the second, for the purpose of discussion. I didn't want to make the, well, I'll just start by saying I didn't want to make the main motion with this, out of it, just to respect the majority opinion of the committee was that it met the criteria. I feel a little bit differently, and don't think that we're ready to move this up to the plan docket, so I did want to offer this amendment. It's mostly to do with process, too. So I have some thoughts, I wrote it down, so bear with me. So the first bit is really about kind of this public benefit definition, so, well, number one, we can't add it to the docket unless we feel, as a council, it's a public benefit to remove the community facilities designation. That's just part of the criteria. To me, that seems like a significant policy question that council should potentially weigh in on beforehand and discuss, really, what does public benefit mean? Certainly, one way of thinking about it is, it's quicker and more efficient to surplus public lands, and the quicker and more efficient, the better, especially when the policy question there is like, really, what are the barriers to development and surplusing? Totally makes sense, I get it. The other way, you know, another way of thinking about public benefit here is that the process of waiting and getting on the docket to rezone a property is actually a tool that could be used to protect public lands, and then the policy questions have to do with kind of values attached to public lands, and really, whether or not land use is a good tool to do that in the first place, and if it's not the best tool, then what is, and in the meantime, should we really get rid of the old tool while we bring in a new tool? So I think you kind of get what I'm thinking. There are a lot of questions in my mind around public benefit, and there's a pretty significant difference here, depending on what council says the policy direction is of how we define public benefits. So I think it's good to ask these questions and have them answered, and have the space to do that first, because I just feel like personally, I can't make that, either one of those claims yet. I see, I see reasons why we would go with both. So that's where my head is at for kind of public benefit. And it would be really good, especially since there's not any urgency, to have kind of a fuller conversation and ask ourselves, you know, what's the problem we're trying to solve, right? Let's examine that and kind of define that. What's the value of communities, of community facilities? The intent behind it was simply to classify what our public space is, right, or what our public properties, but the effect seems to have been more than that. You know, what options are available to us? Are there other kinds of options that we can think about? And then what are the potential future impacts, right? You never really know what future councils will do, so let's just kind of examine potential outcomes there. So that's the first bit. The second bit is around just getting on the docket. So demonstrating public benefit is definitely one of those criteria that we saw in that second list, and that's certainly a policy question, so it's kind of debatable, we can decide whether that makes sense. I think there's an argument, too, that our call-out of city facilities and strategizing and planning in the strategic plan constitutes like an ongoing work program that's approved by the city council. That's also somewhat debatable, though, too. But the other criteria that I see is less debatable, and I appreciate some more clarification around what we think constitutes like changed conditions. I don't know, that seems less debatable, and I'm not necessarily buying the argument that like we're trying to anticipate changed conditions with our upcoming facilities conversations, so we should go through with this. With your kind of rationale, it's a little bit more debatable than I thought it was in my head, given the packet was saying no, but the criteria was saying has to have changed conditions. So it seems to me that at least where we sit right now, there are enough questions up in the air that it would be good to press pause on adding this to the docket and kind of have a fuller conversation this year around some of the policy questions that tie into this. I would prefer that we remove it from the docket, but if council doesn't think that, maybe we can have a discussion up here on the dais about some of these policy questions right now, just in terms of like, how are we thinking about public benefit as a council? How are we thinking about the criteria for getting on the docket, and whether we think this fits it well? So those are my kind of initial thoughts.
Great. A couple of questions for the city clerk. So the discussion about the amendment to the motion, can it go as far as the council member just suggested about talking about the definition of public benefit? Are you talking, I'm a little confused if you meant during the motion, before they vote on it, or trying to, but that was one question, we'll let the city clerk noodle on that for a second. The second is, wanted to ask, if it's okay to ask the staff two questions. One, does timing make a difference? And two, what is an unintended outcome? Is the worst outcome you could possibly get is you start talking this year, and you end another year from now? So if it's okay to ask those two questions of staff?
Yeah, that's good, let's definitely ask those.
Okay, so Stephen, or Andrea, whoever is close, or Minnie, who's ever closest to a microphone, those two questions would be great. And then we'll go back to council comments, and we'll find out from the clerk what kind of, what we need to stick to on that amendment.
Good evening, Mayor Pauli, and Councilmember, in terms of your two questions, the first one was-
You've got to introduce yourself.
Oh, this is Minnie Dalawal, Community Planning and Development Director. And thank you for those questions. So in terms of timing for the, for this, you know, there is really not an urgency on our part to do this this year. I think that's part of the process of docket, that we put everything that we think potentially needs to be addressed, and then you as council as a body debates and discusses and give us the direction to whether to move forward in that. The second part-
The second question was, if it's on the docket, and it takes two years to finish it, is that the bad outcome? Is that it's a more complex conversation, like the council member's saying, and the worst outcome is that the conversation goes on longer than a year?
Sure, sure. So it's an, you know, it's an annual docket, so it would get put up in the docket next year again. The complexity of this issue will come up if it remains in the docket, and some of it is, it's not all city-owned properties. There's Sam Platt that owns some, there's the school district, there's county, and so there are other entities that we would have to kind of engage with and see where that goes. So it's not, you know, I think the tension here with the criteria is really, for, from staff's perspective, all we were trying to do was to clean up and not have to do a rezone every time an issue comes up and the city wants to sell. So with the food bank, with the City Hall Northwest, those were the items, but as you dig into any complex issue, it becomes, you know, things like community facilities become a more complex issue.
Interesting. So let's go back, there we go, Deputy Council President.
So I'm hearing you say that it's not an urgency for us, but is it an urgent issue for the Food and Clothing Bank?
Has gone through a site-specific rezone, so that's on a separate track. So that's just rezoning for their particular property. So that one was easy, because everything around it is zone retail, and so that's the zoning it would get. Other properties, like the ones like community, you know, are, any public facility that we have, like the community center, there's separate standards in the code that talk about community center height, buildings, and all that. So those standards apply to that. So it's not going to be as easy to pick the most surrounding, lowest, and highest use and switch out the zoning. So it will get complex in terms of picking what to replace it with and whatnot. I think that was not the intent of staff, to go down that level of work. It was mostly to see if we could avoid having to do site-specific rezones for any potential sales. Now, those two have already been handled, City Hall Northwest and the food bank, so in terms of the urgency and the timing issue, those two are already addressed through a separate process.
Great. Council President?
Thank you. So I want to take a step back here for people that aren't on the Planning Development Environment Committee, and just recognize that, first of all, what we're doing here is looking at comprehensive plan docket items. So this is, should we have this conversation and direct staff to go about doing the research so that we could consider this at the end of the year? That's on this larger motion. On the amendment here, we're talking specifically about community facilities, and one of the things that staff mentioned to us is, no other city really does a community facilities land use. It's not the way that they designate land use. They designate based on how is it used, you know? Is it a retail space? Is it something like that? And so my perspective is, first of all, I appreciate that staff has brought this up to us, because we have had two instances in the last few years where this has been a, what I would say, a major problem, in that we had to wait a full year in order to rezone two sets of property so that we could get the best and highest use out of it. That, to me, is problematic for the users of that particular land use. In one case, it was the Food and Clothing Bank, in another case, it was us wanting to sell City Hall Northwest. And so we end up with, one, extra staff time on something that is just a procedural waiting point, in my perspective, and two, potential financial ramifications for whoever is trying to get the best use of that property at that point. I would also note that we already have surplus criteria in place, and so we already have a process for deciding if something should be surplus- And so we end up with, one, extra staff time on something that is just a procedural waiting point, in my perspective. And, two, potential financial ramifications for whoever is trying to get the best use of that property at that point. I would also note that we already have surplus criteria in place. And so we already have a process for deciding if something should be surplus, what our use is, what our maintenance requirements are, and how we would go about that process. This is another layer on top of that that just creates a year-long waiting period, really, truly. And so I would recognize all of that as kind of the mindset that I have in going into this. I think it's appropriate, absolutely, to look at the code language and recognize, you know, is there a public benefit? Yes, I think there is, in the fact that there's efficiency, that we're not causing, you know, government employees to have to go through this process, and that we could get the best use out of a piece of property rather than waiting for a year. And then what was the C point? Oh, the changing conditions? I think that one's a little bit difficult to interpret as is because we're talking about an entire concept rather than an individual property on that. But I would say, from my perspective, this came about not because somebody was like, ooh, we should do this, but because we've experienced this as a problem and are trying to address that. And so that would be my interpretation on significantly changed conditions is the fact that we have had issues and had unanticipated consequences because of that policy. So my perspective, I am not in favor of the amendment, and I am in favor of making this change as a part of the docket.
Any other comments? Councilmember Jiang.
Thanks, Mayor Polly. Yeah, just to reiterate and add on to the council president's point, so, you know, just adopting something onto the docket doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to adopt the zoning change. It just means that staff can then spend time working on it, and then, you know, we'll have a chance to review the proposed updates to the zoning probably later this year, is my understanding. Another thing, you know, one thing that I had asked staff was, do other neighboring cities do this? And apparently, the reason why this came up in Issaquah was that we use zoning as a way to determine which properties are owned by the city, which apparently no one else does. And I did look at, you know, what are some of the other similar types of zoning in other cities? For example, in Issaquah, schools are zoned as community facilities, facilities. In Sumamish, Skyline High School, the zoning category is school. So, you know, categorizing things like that, I think, makes sense and is more in line with what other cities are doing. Also, you know, I don't necessarily think we should be using zoning as the method by which to determine how properties are used. Actually, Connie found, you know, a document from the 80s when originally, I think it was related to like the Sportsman's Club or something like that, where, you know, kind of the concept of public benefit came up. But I think that should be a decision more, you know, in like the city's rules about how we, you know, operate properties rather than what the underlying land use is. Because, you know, when it comes down to, for example, with, you know, City Hall Northwest needing to wait a whole year to be able to move forward with that in the market, and not that this happened this time, but for example, you could foresee a world in which, because you didn't do that, the real estate market crashed and the city's out like multiple millions of dollars because we weren't able to move quickly on a sale. So that's, those are just some of the things that I think about, you know, with this policy. And again, you know, I think in terms of the significantly changed conditions, I do agree that the way that it's worded is a little bit confusing, but I think, you know, significantly changed conditions are those resulting from unanticipated consequences of an adopted policy. The adopted policy of community facility zoning had the unintended consequence of making it really difficult to surplus city land, and that's something that has, you know, come up more recently. And I think that warrants staff working on figuring out this change.
Thank you. Any other comments? And I do have another staff question, too. I know that when this was added to the docket, it was considered to be, what can I call it, a light conversation, but nowhere near as in-depth as now the council has indicated that they want. So I guess my question would be, would council be disappointed if Director Dollywall goes back and looks at the workload with the current expectations of what this conversation should look like and finds out that you're not getting all of that by the end of the year? She may be able to come back and let you know that based on the questions that were asked, the complexity of the level of conversation you want to have, that this is the piece that will get talked about this year, but you're very likely to be working on this longer just because of staff availability? Because I don't think they thought they were going to have as robust a conversation as apparently the council desires to have. So Minnie, is that a fair way of stating the expectation?
Sure. You know, and I would also say in terms of changed conditions, you know, when we were looking at the criteria, because as part of the code update, the criteria used to be very difficult. It's that density and, you know, not increasing that. And the idea there was that these things aren't looked at one-off things, that you're looking at all of the city comprehensively in the comprehensive plan, and then unless there's a significant change, you know, new light rail station gets built, and now suddenly the zoning around that needs to be looked at, or something of the major significance change, that was sort of the discussion during the criteria write-up that happened with the Planning and Policy Commission and Council at the time. So, you know, with this current proposal, has anything changed? I think that's where the debate is. Has it anything changed physically in the city or since the comp plan update changed? I think there's argument to be made, no. But what has changed? You know, I think, like Stephen said, maybe the idea that... But to answer your specific question, we don't have the bandwidth to do, to take deeper conversations with all the other agencies and sit down and figure out what that zoning is going to be. That's not what this topic was ever meant to be. It was meant to be more of a cleanup kind of a thing, I think, in staff's mind. We're happy to take direction and figure that out. We will spend a lot of time, then we'll come back to council with a, you know...
What you can do.
Yeah. And there are different ways. I mean, we could do an overlay zone and keep the zoning underneath because the, we, there are also provisions in the code that protect public, you know, investment and resources. So you're allowed to go have more non-conforming, you know, abilities to expand and do other things because it's public's investment. It's public dollars that are built into it. So there's code language that protects some of those things. So, you know, we'll have to kind of keep those protections regardless of the zoning, whatever is put in. If it is a community center, a senior center, a school property, or a Sam Platt property, or anything that county owns that we've given it a community facilities zoning.
So I am appreciative that the committee had a good conversation and that you got to discuss the differences of where different individual council committee members are on this. But I think that the realistic answer is it could stay on the docket. You're probably not going to get what you want this year. It probably would move into another year. If you take it off the docket, there's still a little bandwidth to have the beginning of the conversation this year before it was on the docket. There just isn't extra bandwidth to expand the conversation this year. So I don't think you're going to lose either way. Council President?
Even though this conversation has come up, there was an initial intent by staff of, hey, the idea is to eliminate community facility zoning and, or land use, and then be able to assign them to an appropriate zone for each instance. Is that still something that is doable at this point?
You know, it will get, we'll have to look at all of this. Some of these properties may be surrounded by zones that existing use isn't even allowed, for instance. So then are we going to be having a conversation of making it non-conforming because your surrounding zoning isn't what this is? So in the end, we may just end up calling it something else, but it's still not, you know, getting the adjacent zoning, if that's the intent. And each one of it is going to be different. And we may circle back and come back to the same conclusion that the way we kind of have this laid out right now, maybe that's as to stay for until we have more further conversations with all these other agencies that own the property, or even what the city's facilities plan looks like, what is the long-term plan? So it may be premature for that because of those reasons as well.
Any other council comments before we move on to voting on the amendment? Councilmember Hall?
Well, I would just love to hear, so the committee, we've definitely talked about kind of how we might think about how we're defining public benefit and the policy around that. I'm just curious if there are any other council members that are thinking about public benefit differently or the same way, or before we vote.
Anybody else would like to comment on that? Councilmember Marts?
Well, I'm going to answer the question a little bit differently than you asked it. I'm going to not support this amendment because my general policy is that I let these things get resolved in committee. And then if I hear something in the full council that makes me change my mind, then I will change my mind. But I sort of want to default to supporting the way the committee chooses to look at these things. And the committee has spent a bunch of time on this, and the fact that it was a two-to-one vote, but the fact that the committee had a preference. I have not heard anything this evening yet that would make me want to overturn the work that the committee did. So that's, I wanted to fairly give you an answer to the question of why I'm going to vote no on the amendment. Thank you.
Any other council members wanting to weigh in? I am not seeing an indication, so I'm going to call for the vote. The motion for the amendment is to amend the motion to remove docket item number 3A, to remove community facilities and community facilities privately owned from the land use designation map. All those in favor of this amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
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 The amendment fails five to one. Are there any other amendments? Is there any other further discussion on the main motion? Council President?
Thank you. I appreciate that this was brought up. I always love seeing our docket of comprehensive plan amendments. As much as it's a geeky municipal thing, it also represents progress, and it represents us trying to adjust the way that we do business for the betterment of our community. And so I appreciate the things that we do in these areas that are trying to move things forward, whether it's one property at a time, as is the case in some instances, or overall. So, thank you.
Great. Any other comments? Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, I think definitely geeky municipal fun stuff, so appreciate that. I'm going to vote in favor of the docket as well, just in favor of process. We have it now. It seems like council has kind of made the policy choice already for what public benefit should be in here, so that's okay. We had a conversation on the dais, which is success in my mind, so I'm glad we talked about that. I do think that there is some opportunity to look at this criteria a little bit at a certain time. Maybe this is something we add to the whiteboard. It's so vague in some ways and things that aren't defined, and I would love to have a conversation about that at some point, maybe. I'm seeing some smiles. Maybe much later. I mean, we have a long Title 18 whiteboard list and stuff like that, but it seems like potentially an opportunity to have some more policy-level discussions. But I'll be supporting the docket this evening.
Any other comments on the main motion, which is to approve the docket? Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving the 2025 docket of the Comprehensive Plan and Land Use Designation Map amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously, six and oh. Minnie, I think they've had enough conversation that can help you and Stephen frame up what you can accomplish in this year. That's great. So thank you very much. The next AB on our list this evening is AB 9002, Establishment of a Fourth of July Commission. And I see she's already up there. Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder here to present this item. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I'm Andrea Snyder, Deputy City Administrator, standing in for City Administrator Bobkowitz this evening. And we, the administration is proposing that in celebration of the 250th anniversary of America's independence, which is next year, that we establish a Fourth of July Commission, and that the commission could start this year and get their feet wet in planning the Fourth of July event for this summer, and then stay as a commission to help plan for Issaquah's celebration of the 250th anniversary of our country. So the commission would be nine members and would go towards planning Issaquah's celebration. And we seek approval to create this commission tonight.
Thank you, Andrea. Any questions? I am not seeing any questions from council. Could somebody please make a motion? Council President?
I move to approve Resolution Number 2025-08, Establishing a Fourth of July Commission Through December 31st, 2026.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Council President?
Thank you. I think we have talked often on council about the loneliness epidemic and the fact that, you know, we as a country and community are divided in many ways. And so I see this as much as just a simple planning of a parade, an event, but also about bringing our community together and creating opportunities for engagement. It's also important to recognize that, you know, we have difficult budget years, and so this is not something that we have necessarily a staff position for, but which creates an opportunity for community to get involved and to recognize the importance of having an event like this in our community and how they can contribute. So I appreciate the administration for bringing this up as a possibility. Thank you.
Any other comments? Not seeing any other comments. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously, six and oh. We're moving on to committee and regional reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Jiang.
My report is that I attended my first PIC meeting, so Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee meeting as an alternate. There's a very robust and interesting discussion about the upcoming King County Parks levy. And I don't know, I don't know if Councilmember Marts wants to talk a bit about, you know, some of the specifics of that discussion.
That's a good one. Thank you, Councilmember Jiang. Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. At our last Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, we went through the proposals for funding. Those will be coming back to council soon, so stay tuned for those. The next LTAC meeting will be May 5th at 2:00 p.m. Location is Spring Hill Suites. We often will meet at the hotels of the committee members in the interest of convenience for them as they're giving their time to this committee. Cascade Water Alliance Board will be meeting on March 26th, and the Cascade Water Alliance Public Affairs Committee will be meeting on April 2nd. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
Thanks. I have a small collection of reports, although I don't have to give PDE's report since we just had that. So, yeah, we talked about the proposed docket of comp plan amendments there. Our next meeting is April 1st, Tuesday, April 1st, and we'll be looking at middle housing draft regulations and 2025 Title 18 clarifying amendments. So that'll be fun. For EFR, Eastside Fire and Rescue, we last met on Thursday, March 13th. We had a presentation from members of the Internal Mission Vision Values Work Group, which is a stakeholder group across the agency that have spent the last years working on updating the agency's mission, vision, and values. We were really impressed with their work, so I will pass, I'll pass this down this way first, just in case you want to take a look at that work. We officially approved moving forward with a contract for services with GMP Consultants to conduct our fire recruitment, fire chief recruitment process. I emailed out their proposal, and I'll pass this around, or just let me know if you want to take a look at this proposal, too, if you're interested. But let us know if you have any questions. We appointed members to the Long-Term Ad Hoc Committee, including Councilmember Marts. The first thing they'll be looking at is an issue that kind of limits our ability to take on debt as an agency, which has kind of meant we've had to press pause on financing some apparatus. So we'll likely need to amend the inter-local agreement in some way, so stay tuned on that work. And then we had a presentation on our fee for transport policy, which I also emailed out in case you're interested in learning more about that. Just to clarify, this is for BLS, for basic life support, so if you need to be transported to a medical facility like a hospital. If it's something more serious, right, that's what's called ALS, Advanced Life Support, which is fully funded by the King County EMS levy. So, again, feel free to reach out with any questions, and I can get you connected with the agency staff. And our next meeting is Thursday, April 10. Councilmember Marts and myself will be on the new Safety and Civic Facilities Task Force with members of the community, so excited about that. Thank you, Mayor Polly. Our first meeting is tomorrow evening. And on the agenda is a project overview. And on the agenda is a project overview, visioning exercise, and survey discussion. And it looks like members of the task force are getting more or less the same kind of tour that we got of city facilities, so that'll be good, or most of us. Hopefully you get an opportunity to, you should do that too. Yeah. Anyways, things are moving along, we'll keep you in the loop. I have not had time to look at the agenda, my apologies, but I, on Thursday, this Thursday, am going to the Raya Eight Salmon Recovery Council, we're having our meeting there. And then on Friday, the Kokoni I L A Management Committee. And that concludes my report.
Nice, thank you. Council member Martz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As already mentioned, Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee did indeed meet on March 12th at 7:00 P. M. Couple of things we talked about, there was a growth target reconciliation conversation that involved the targets for carnation in Snoqualmie. They had both requested changes to their targets, and they had made counter proposals that basically reduced some of their market rate targets, but kept their subsidized or workforce housing targets close to the same. Basically, PIC came away and said that we were in support of these changes. They represented a minuscule change in the overall county targets. And we're, our recommendation was that those numbers would not have to get folded back into the rest of the cities of the county, but that they should just be the new, the new overall targets. We'll see where that goes. Then the other thing that was mentioned was the King County Parks levy renewal. There was a long, it was a long conversation, I would say an hour of the two hours was on this topic. And some of the points that were raised that we also had concerns about was the fact that they were looking for approximately eight percent return to the cities versus, you know, recent levies that had direct returns, like the Arts levy of more like 25%. So we were hoping to see something closer to that. The overall amount is a significant increase over the previous Parks levy. We'd like to see it more of a, of a continuous function, so people wouldn't see an increase in their bills. Everyone is concerned about, we, we, you know, people have been saying for 10 years we have tax fatigue and levy fatigue, but, you know, not going into details, in the last six months, we've now been seeing that in what the, what the voters are actually telling us. So there was a lot of concern there. Having this levy fail would be catastrophic for the county because they do, do their operating funds out of this levy. So it's really one of those can't fails. So there were also questions around how grants are given out to the communities. And you put it all together, and a number of our communities said, look, we need to be able to go to the public and tell them what the benefit of this is. And we don't feel that as it's written right now, without some of these changes, it's going to be a more challenging conversation. And we understand it needs to pass, so help us, help give us the tools to make it pass. My understanding is there were, at least as of last Wednesday, lots of conversation behind the scenes about potential changes. So we kept open, open the possibility of having an emergency PIC session to respond to potential changes, so that we could then give guidance to the board. And I have not seen any communications yet about an emergency session. That concludes my report.
Thanks. Deputy Council President De Michele?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. So Friday, March 14th, we had a really robust Eastside Transportation Partnership meeting in person in Redmond. It was really great to see everybody in person and not on Zoom. We had great reports. So, good news from Metro, King County Council passed the restructuring that will be taking place in 2025 and 2026, which means that Metro has been authorized to add over 3,300 bus trips each week all across the Eastside. And the first round of those improvements will start on March the 29th. And then the second round will of course be instituted when the Lake Light Rail in Redmond opens on May the 10th. We're all invited, it's going to be a huge party, let's, let's go. And so at that time, they'll have, have, the total addition will be 3,500 service hours every week across the Eastside. So all of this benefits the entire Eastside. Particularly for us, the 269 will be adding service. That's the connection we have to Redmond. And they're increasing weekdays, nights, and weekend services. So good for those people who use transit for work and getting around in, not on commute times. So that was a great, great report. They also reported they had a significant improvement in the ridership levels this last quarter. So everything's looking really a lot better for Metro than it has for the last few years. So the second item on the agenda at E T P was we received a legislative update from Puget Sound Regional Council staffer Robin Koski. That was a little bit more grim, and not, not the best news, but everything is still in process down in Olympia. So there's a new, I think a revenue forecast coming up on Thursday, and so then we'll start looking at budgets for transportation. So at any rate, we'll, we'll see how the process plays out. And then the last thing on the, on the agenda is we just participated in a round robin, where we went around the room and everybody talked about the impacts to transportation in our individual localities. And coming out of that discussion, which was really, really good to hear from everybody, there's 22 cities that are involved in Eastside Transportation Partnership, and we heard from most of them. The upshot of that was that Chair Critzer, the, the current chair of E T P suggested that we collate a letter that we could share with our congressional delegation, meaning the congressional delegation that represents the Eastside regarding the impacts of the decisions, both at the federal level and the state level, on our transportation needs. And thanks to City Administrator Bobkowitz, we already started on the process of sharing that with, with the Metro staff, and that letter will be assembled soon. And I volunteered to be on the letter writing committee, so, so at any rate, very, very exciting meeting. I have a regional transit committee meeting Wednesday afternoon that I'll be attending, and then Thursday afternoon, I'll be attending the Board of Health. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Council president.
Thank you. On March 6th, I attended the Puget Sound Regional Council's Growth Management Policy Board, and we also got an update from Robin Koski, which was also grim, which suggested that at the federal level, the U.S. Housing and Urban Development was expecting staff reductions of 50%. And that section four grant contracts have been terminated, which is what provides help for startups, for affordable housing projects, where they're trying to determine whether or not it's a viable project or not. And so we got that. We also continued looking through the comprehensive plans for Bellevue, Bothell, Burien, Port Orchard, and Wilkerson, and recommended certification of those plans. So that will go forward, and they will potentially qualify for grants and such. Had an initial conversation about regional center system monitoring, just queuing that up for a potential redesignation process that will begin in the summer and fall of 2025. And so that was that meeting. And then I also, same day, attended the King County Affordable Housing Committee. We continued looking through the housing elements of comprehensive plans, in this case, looking at Skicomish, population 500, really big changes there. So we approved a comment letter there, looked at our work plan, and then really just started a conversation that's going to continue about the new strategic direction for the Affordable Housing Committee. As Chair Bel Ducci often says of the King County Council, the Affordable Housing Committee is an advisory committee to an advisory committee because we sit underneath the Growth Management Planning Council, G M P C. And so all of those advise up to the King County Executive. And so we're just grappling with this idea of, you know, we don't have funding, we don't have the ability to really bring cities together and kind of make big changes. So just trying to figure out where the organization goes for the next year and how we can best be useful. So far, it's been very focused on land use because we sit underneath the Growth Management Planning Council. So it, whether we stay there and continue that as the focus or otherwise, will be the discussion next time. That concludes my report.
Thanks. Moving on to the next agenda item is the mayor's report. So there will not be an executive session this evening. And I am excited to share more progress on one of Isco's key transportation projects. Our Newport Way corridor from State Route 900 to Southeast 54th Improvement Project is going to be awarded an additional almost $650,000 in federal highway administration funding from the Puget Sound Regional Council, bringing the total investment so far in this project up to 2.85 million. This new funding will support right-of-way acquisition for the improvements. And the project will, when built out, will construct with new bike lanes, sidewalks, landscape medians, improved intersections, and a new mixed-use path that will enhance the Mountains to Sound Greenway connection. The project represents a thoughtful blend of funding resources, including federal grants, mitigation fees, and utility revenues, ensuring that we maximize external dollars while responsibly managing local funds. So once complete, the Newport Way Northwest Corridor will offer safer, more accessible travel options for all users while strengthening our community's mobility and infrastructure. So thanks to the Puget Sound Regional Council and all of our regional partners, supporting Issaquah's vision, keeping the critical dollars working here at home. Join me tomorrow at the Spring Business Open House tomorrow, March 18th. Drop in anytime between 8:00 to 9:30 a.m. at Blakely Hall in the Issaquah Highlands. Entrepreneurs and business owners can speak one-on-one with city staff about lots of different topics, permitting, public safety, light rail planning, business resiliency, business assistance, and more. Immediately following the event, coworking is going to be open at Blakely Hall from 9:30 to 1:00 P. M., so that business owners and remote workers can spend a little more time there, meeting more folks in their business community. More information's available at the city's calendar. And we are also now opening nominations for the Issaquah Hall of Fame Award. This is a top city award for making, for an individual, to honor them for making a lasting contribution to our community. This award shall go to someone who has made a significant impact on the Issaquah community over the course of their career. And each year, the mayor and council president select a person to induct into the Issaquah Hall of Fame for their exemplary record of inspiration, leadership, and service. The award will be presented at the Chamber of Commerce Annual Issaquah Community Awards Event on June 3rd, and you can submit nominations at issaquahwa.gov/nominate. The deadline is 5:00 P. M. on April 30th. And that concludes the mayor's report. There is an informational update this evening, ID 1828, on permit process improvements, and we have Community Planning and Development Director Minnie Dollywall. Are you doing the presentation? Or are you handing it off?
Good evening again. Minnie Dollywall, Community Planning and Development Director. I wanted to introduce the team, and then I'll come back and present.
Great.
So tonight, we've got our whole CPD leadership team, our Community Planning and Development. We have Emily Appleton, our Engineering Manager, so she oversees all the review processes for water, sewer, roads, utilities, you name it. And then we've got James Gray, our Building Official. He makes sure all the buildings are safe. And Stephen Padua, he manages both long-range and current planning. So all land use related stuff. And they've been working on the materials that are in your packet today. And then last but not least is Tina Eggers, in the executive's office, has been loaned over to Community Planning and Development Department since the beginning of this year to work with all of our staff that have been divvied up into different teams, that have taken up one of the 12 recommendations that we'll get into in a little bit, and working with our staff, CPD staff. And she'll share some information to come on up. Tina will kick it off.
First, Tina. Thank you. Welcome, Tina.
My apologies to, sir, I, it's just looping through status. Thank you. Appreciate that. I'm going to hit cancel. Great. While she's doing that, Tina Eggers from the Executive Department. I'm here this evening to provide an update on the permit process improvements. The last time that this was in front of you was June of last year, 2024, where our consultant, Raftalas, provided a report and recommendations to streamline the processes and to help CPD, the Community Planning Development Department, become compliant with our permit timelines established under Senate Bill 5290. Those went into effect January 1st of this year. Additionally, we'll be seeking feedback regarding performance measures and determine if there's any additional metrics that we should be tracking. Next slide, please. As this is a city priority, as identified under the growth and development, it reads "improve project permitting review process." As a priority, it's important to keep you updated, and that's why we're here. Next slide. I'll start with the 12 recommendations identified in the Raftalas report and include staff efforts to date. We refer to these as PPIs, so I'll refer to them by number throughout the 12 recommendations. This is the update, well, this update represents the great work of the department. Staff who created cross-division teams, they work together, meeting regularly, weekly, monthly, and at our quarterly retreats to realign, prioritize, and work on next steps. Next slide. Perfect. I'll be brief, so you can spend more time on the performance measures, because I think that's where you start seeing the information. So PPI 1, Submittal Guidelines. This is important information to the applicant. This is when they're preparing to submit their application. So as of date, many guidelines have been updated, and the department continues to delve deeper into the various guidelines. Most currently, due to staffing changes, the team was reconfigured and continues to focus on their top 13 prioritized list. This item, as all of the PPIs, is targeted for completion by the end of Q2. PPI 2, Complete List Review. This is the review by which the department determines completeness of application. As recommended by the consultant, staff are eliminating email communication between each other, meaning rather than talk about the complex review processes via email, they're going to use the systems that are in place, such as TrackIt or My Building Permit. And then they have what they call the, the staff on duty at the counter, and they'll use that team to talk through and communicate the status of those. PPI 3, Applicant Communication Template. This is essential communication to the applicant. This speaks to the next steps. And so this item is in progress. PPI 4, Peer Review. This is for items that require consultant review. So the goal, the goal is specifically to identify the need when a consultant's peer review is needed more quickly, streamline the process for things like the contract, billing, and deposits. And those are the things that are underway. PPI 5, Internal Collaboration Meetings. This relates to the internal departments, specifically other departments that require permits for city projects. CPD staff are routinely on hand to answer staff questions, but wanted to provide more support through the creation of SOP and submittal checklist for, for those teams. This is to enhance the collaboration meetings, specifically with public works and parks. PPI 6, High Volume Mailings. The consultant suggested that we contract out our mailing services. Staff determined this did not provide the flexibility nor desired cost savings. In lieu of third-party service, the team implemented a postcard mailing system. This has proven to be very effective with both time and costs. PPI 7, Permit Coordination Position. This is a budgeted position, one that I'm partially filling at this time. This position will be critical, it's a critical asset to the department in managing projects and ensuring that required timelines are met. We hope to have this position recruited for and filled later this year. That coincides with my departure with the city. Next slide. PPI 8, Performance Measures. This has been implemented, it's great success, and you'll hear more about that in just a bit. PPI 09, these are SOPs. These are the department-wide standard operating procedures. Current efforts underway to compile the SOPs into one location, mark, keep, delete, modify. Next, working with the clerk's office on proper SharePoint to implement those. Next, working with the Clerk's Office on proper SharePoint to implement those. PPI 10, Quarterly Improvement Review. This has been implemented. This is a quarterly retreat of the department. All staff coming together, dedicating three hours every few months to make greater improvements. The most recent retreat held on February 26th. Staff were engaged, they worked collaboratively, they received some training from the Clerk's Office, we delved into realigning, determining areas of prioritization, and other next steps. It was great to see the team in action, and I regret not having a photo of that experience. It was really neat. PPI 11, Training Program. Staff has completed its colors training. That's learning about distinct behavior and communication styles, crucial conversations, training that was to help foster open dialogue and alignment. And, let's see. Next training will be on the updated SOPs checklist and code interpretation. This is so that there's consistency within the department. PPI 12, last on the list, Contract with Software Developer. This item is marked as paused because the consultant's recommendation was for in-house software developer. Our focus currently is that we're working with IT Department and a consultant to determine the best course for software upgrades and replacement. There's also conversations happening over at EastCityGov, so we wanted to make sure that we were spending our time having the best conversations. So, that concludes the list of the 12 recommendations. Again, I'd like to reiterate the great work of staff, their interests, their efforts are observed in the work that they do. I, again, I have a big thank you to the team, so I'll be sure to pass that on. I'll invite Minnie over.
Thanks, Tina.
There we go. Councilwoman Mertz.
Before we move off those 12 steps, I can't tell from this which ones you, are they all gonna be done by end of Q2? Are there any, other than the, other than the one that's paused, are there any that are not anticipated to be completed by the end of Q2?
Our goal is to get all of them done by quarter 2, but we're not done with it forever. You know, the idea of being a continuous improvement model, so the first hump, you know, we've collected all our standard operating procedures, we've put them in one place, we've deleted, modified, added more, but then get on a cycle where annually, you know, or twice a year, we look at that stuff and see what's missing, what changed, you know, state law changes or something. So, it's a continuous thing, but yes, the first stage of getting through most of them would be the end of second quarter. That's our goal.
I totally get that that's the goal. Are you on pace to be done with all of them by the end of Q2? Do you have positive float on all 12?
We will know more in a couple of months. At this point, March, April, May, for sure, but we do believe it's doable. It's not pie in the sky that we won't get to it.
You don't know the current float on these? If they're due at the end of June, I would sure hope that you'd know a lot sooner than the end of May.
We are on track. If your question, yeah, if your question is, are we on track to finishing it by quarter 2, I would say yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Council President?
Thank you. In this case, there were a few things that were kind of mentioned as in progress. With the submittal guidelines, you identified and prioritized a list, and with the applicant communication template, three templates created. In either of those cases, is anything active with applicants, or is it still in the internal development and hasn't seen outward use?
Good question. So, the checklist, you know, we did a big scrub of the checklist after Title 18 update just to reflect the new code. So, those have been live for a long time. Out of the other construction permits, you know, one-off things, the solar permit or mechanical permit and these kind of things, we haven't put them online, you know, on, but we have those applications online, but there'll be tweaks and things like that that will go online. I think out of this effort, we prioritized there 13, in addition to the ones that we had previously updated that we are looking at at this point. So, those 13, we want to update and put them online as soon as possible, but they're not online yet.
Okay. And follow-up question to that, I know one of the things in the initial report was looking at concerns that submittals were coming through that either didn't have all of the information, or were, didn't have the quality of information. And so, I'm wondering if there, I didn't see a metric that would necessarily suggest whether or not you were achieving more completed, complete applications on first submittal or not versus, you know, basically trying to determine if those checklists are effective at achieving the goal that you were looking for.
Yeah. We can track a number of complete applications, you know, definitely for land use, because we are actually sending them a letter for completeness and incompleteness. For construction permits, we didn't want to create extra work for just sending a letter of completeness. If they're complete, we move them along. Only the ones that are incomplete would we then reach out to the applicant and say, "You're missing these two things or five things." And that's what I think, as Tina was presenting, we used to do that for construction permits by, you know, the permit techs can make the decision about 80% of them. They see the materials, it's there, it's part of the checklist. 20% of them are sometimes questionable. So, we used to do that through email, you know, send an email to all the reviewers. What we're trying to do that is the planner on duty, the engineer on duty for the day, or the plans reviewer, that they can call them up that day for a quick huddle for, you know, 10 minutes, and they can look at what, they already have it on the screen, and determine what's missing or not missing, and then send it back out. So, that review happens in mybuildingpermit.com, which is the online portal, before it even hits the, our permitting software. So, it's a little bit, because we have two disjointed things, and it doesn't show up in the system, it's harder to get a report out of mybuildingpermit.com, but we can look into it, because we're doing construction permit completeness review at MVP stage, before we even route it in our system. So, once it's accepted, that means it's complete and it gets routed. But we can run reports through mybuildingpermit.com, unfortunately, at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Definitely for land use, we can.
Oh, certainly. Minnie. Councilwoman Hall.
Well, on what you just said around MyBuildingPermit, is that something that we would hope would change with the state request that we have around kind of the backend development of MyBuildingPermit?
Yes. If we, you know, regardless of, if we switch out from TrackIt and it's the frontend and the backend, it's a different system, certainly we could, we would, that would be our ask that we configure it, but it's gonna take time, you know, even if it is E-CityGov, starting from scratch, building a product, testing it, launching it, coming it, it's not gonna be in the next year or so.
Right. Well, and I assume we're keeping a list of things we would like to see on whatever backend.
Yes. So, IT Department has hired a consulting firm that is talking to all of our staff and trying to get a needs assessment down. So, regardless of what path the city chooses to do, at least we know what we need. So, that's happening as we speak.
Any additional questions, or continue with the presentation? And, Minnie, is there additional presentation?
Yes. So, we wanted to share with you, you know, all this is great if we can measure our progress, that's where we wanted to kind of focus and get your feedback and share what we have. So, this is a screen that you all may be familiar with. This is a city's dashboard. It hasn't gone live with the 2024 data, but you'll get a separate presentation from Dale when that is online, but she gave us a preview of our piece, so there are a few screens. This was set up many years ago, and it's really looking at only the first permit review time. So, when something comes in, it gets routed the first round of review, because that's all we could measure under the system at the time, because creating reports that measures multiple review times wasn't something that was feasible. So, and at the time, the decision was made to focus on small tenant improvement. So, tenant improvement is just working inside, usually not an expansion of a business, but just to swap out of one small business into a commercial space with another one. Or a large tenant improvement, which could include a little bit more expansion, but generally work on the inside of a commercial space. Preliminary plat, which is more than nine lots, and plating, commercial multifamily. So, for 2024, these were the target timelines that were set up for the first round, and we seem to have met the four, those four targets. Next slide. There were two other measures that were not meeting currently, so new single-family, first round of review, and short plats. Short plats are low volume, so it may have been one or two things that came in that were difficult sites or something, but we're looking at the new single-family piece and have lowered the bar. Because we have these state guidelines, we have, we're not giving ourselves the targets that we'd set up initially for the first round of review. Next slide. The other thing that the city's dashboard currently measures is an assortment of permits, but those were selected at the time, between short plats, site development permits, site work, building, mechanical, plumbing, right-of-way, and so on. So, just over the years, how does the volume of those specific types fluctuates? That gives, you know, a snippet of, are there peaks and valleys, or are we sort of maintaining our volume of work on, for those specific types, kind of similar. Next slide. So, that's what historically we've measured, but we wanted to kind of take, you know, get further along on our measurement, because if you're making progress, we should be able to measure that. And particularly with the State Bill 5290, there are three tiers of timelines. So, the first one is 65 days, so those are permits and land use decisions that don't have any public notice. And then we have the ones that require a public notice but no public hearing, those 100 days. And then we have the ones that require a public hearing, those 170 days. So, we looked at the data from 2024, and this slide only shows the land use permits, so that's the entitlement phase before they actually apply for construction permits. So, we did pretty good in terms of the total number, but we, you know, in the last category, not so much. So, we're taking a deeper dive to see, you know, what can we learn from the ones that we see to the timeline? What could we have done differently? Next slide. And then, you know, that's the past data, but we also are monitoring what's in the hopper today that is actively being reviewed. So, that's something that we can actually do something about. And it's looking pretty good, but I also wanted to kind of caveat it with, we do have one permit here, and maybe, you know, a few that may come in that are vested to the old code, are generally on very difficult sites. They have been back and forth with the applicant a number of times, but there are either severe geotechnical issues, you know, landslide hazards or things like that, that are still in our process, and it'll take some time for all of those to kind of get resolved. So, the reporting for next year may show a few of those carry-on, ones that have been in the city's system for many years, but we're trying to resolve most of them and get them to a completion place. Next slide. So, that was land use, and then we moved on to construction permits. So, this is an excerpt from the Raff Talis Report that looked at the trends from '21 through May of 2024, I believe that's when the report was done, and in these different categories. So, while we show progress overall in our timelines over those years, we wanted to then see how did we end 2024. So, next slide. So, that trend continued in 2024. In this slide, we focused mostly on construction permits, because land use we're doing differently. One thing to note here was there was debate about whether 5290 actually applied to construction permits or not. Very late-breaking, you know, Department of Commerce guidance said, cities, we recommend you should consider those timelines also apply to construction permits. There's a little bit of a, you know, construction permits generally don't have a public hearing, but a small house versus a large building, you know, if you're gonna give everyone 60 days for that, or is it the one large building that went through a public hearing process gets the 170 days? That's where we've landed, but I think, it's my understanding, state legislature's trying to clarify whether the building permits, these timelines even apply to building permits. Some cities are taking a position, it doesn't apply. We've taken a position, they do apply, and we'll do our best to have them, you know, at least monitor how we're doing on our construction permits. So, the first column here shows overall how many permits we process, just the construction permits. So, it's over about 1,700 permits, but they also include over-the-counter things like plumbing permits or mechanical, where folk, you know, there's not a plan review involved. So, the average days for those look fairly decent, but we also wanted to see, does average really paint a true, you know, give us all the data that we're looking for, because there may be few outliers that can skew the data. So, then we focused on the third column was just the building construction permits that actually had plan review part of it. And for those, those are the numbers of how many of those were there. And then we looked at what percentage of those did actually meet the target and how many did not. So, about a third of building permits, we did not meet our target, and closer to 43%. So, about half of site work permits, we didn't, but for all the others, we looked pretty good. So, we're gonna focus on the building and the site work permit to see where, where the, you know, where we can make improvements on. And of course, our goal is that we get all 100% of those, the 0% that exceeds the target. Next slide. So, part of this is also the Commerce reporting. So, next slide. So, as part of the Bill 5290 was some reporting requirements. So, while these timelines came into effect starting January of 2025, the reporting also is gonna be for 2024. The, you know, we've been waiting for Department of Commerce to give us guidance, that was delayed, it was provided in February, and therefore, they extended the reporting timeline to March 31st, so we'll be submitting it by March 31st. In the meantime, council has adopted a resolution, which was also part of the guidance that came from Commerce, that it's actually language in the bill, that if you have three out of eight measures, then the refund provisions don't apply, which you all adopted that resolution. You know, we have adopted fees, we have made pre-applications optional, we have peer-review contracts on file. So, we met those requirements, and the refund provisions don't apply to our, to the city. We are finalizing the report. We have a little summary for you in the next slide or so. But Commerce is really focusing on very small slice of permits. So, they're talking about preliminary subdivisions, final subdivisions, binding site plan, which is really for condominium-type of development, if you're trying to create those, multifamily housing permits, and permits for construction of each of those. But they're not interested in getting numbers for single-family detached, or commercial, or mechanical, or plumbing, or any of those, while those timelines still apply to them, but their report is gonna be the smaller section of permits. Next slide. So, here's what we're working on and will be presenting to them. So, we had two preliminary subdivisions, which have been in the city's system for some time, one final subdivision for multifamily and for construction permits. So, the subdivisions are, you know, more than nine lots, so one of them was for Zontalis, and the other one is Edward Short Plat, which had coal mines and so on. You know, this is, these have been in the city's process for a while, but, so, the Commerce guideline talks about average days in review and average total days. And so, we're showing here, you know, the time, in-house time for the city, and the time the city was waiting for the applicant to resubmit. But that's, that's sort of the snippet of data that Commerce is collecting from all the cities, and they'll be presenting. We have one or two other larger legacy projects like that, that, you know, may show up in our reporting for next year, but anything new that's coming in under the new code and under the streamlined processes is a totally different picture than what you see here. Next slide. So, that was land use, construction permits, but then Raff Talis, you know, report appendix, I think A, also had other metrics that we could consider. So, we've chosen a few. Emily's worked on these, and if you have questions, so, next slide. You know, this is really workload metrics, so internally, for us to know how many are community planning and development reviews and inspections, but we also have other city departments that sometimes need to look at it, say, for frontage improvements, public works- at it, say for frontage improvements, public works will need to know what the city's project is over here, if there's a round planned, how does it intersect with the city's planned project or, or whatnot. But we also have SAM plat and EFER that do permit reviews. So those are not city staff, but we rely on, on fire department and SAM plat to do those reviews. We've had an initial conversations with them, told them about these permit timelines. All we can do is request that they honor when they're sent out and then they meet the timelines, but we'll be monitoring that as well. Next slide.
Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. So, so we do go more granular than just outside agencies? We can see when the fire marshal's office is?
Yeah.
How many times there, okay. Because, because the agency is also thinking, well, they need more money in order to hire another fire marshal to go like that. So have, have there been any more conversations about how to meet these deadlines for kind of fire permit fees in particular, or?
Yeah, I mean, our process has been, you know, if we see some things delayed on their end, we, you know, James has a great relationship with them, and he'll call the fire marshal and say, how can we help? Is this working? You know, sometimes there's a track it issue, they can, they get locked out of track it or something like that. And then our IT department has to get on and, and help them kind of figure that part out. But for the most part, I think there, there are ups and downs where they can sometimes fall behind, but I think for the most part, James, they're, they've been staying on track. Yeah. So this one is kind of on the same theme of workload metrics. This took the total number of reviews and inspections and divided it by FTEs. So really looking at how much, how many permits and reviews we have and how much staff do we have to cover it? So if we start seeing big fluctuation, there's a huge amount of work and are we not staffed up in resources? This sort of will show us that. Next slide. This is what we're calling an effectiveness metrics. And this is, you know, how many rounds of review do we take to approve a permit? And our goal is that by second review, we can get to majority of the permits being approved. There'll always be some that, you know, go through a cycle, more than two rounds of review. But on the left-hand side, you see all the land use permits, 69% in 2024 were approved by second round, but in 2025, there's 88%. For construction permits, they've all hovered over 83%, but we want to take a deeper dive into it, because what about the 17% that we took longer? You know, was there a pattern among them? Was it all building permits and construction permits and so on and so forth? So, but this at least gives us, are we going through many, many rounds and what is the cause for it? And what, what I think Reftellis told us, it's, you know, incomplete applications that are coming in, people not being clear about what they need to submit. We're not clear about our communication about the next steps and so on and so forth. Next slide. Same things, two rounds of review. So the ones that are in our hopper that are active for land use, we have 40 of them, five of them have already passed the two rounds of review, same thing. But there's a smaller slice at the top, so we'll be looking at at least getting those issues and understanding those issues, but also looking at the, the blue portion and making sure that they don't slide into more than two rounds. And, and that's going to be, you know, all those SOPs, all those checklists will then, we'll have to give it some time for that to become effective where these numbers start, it starts reflecting here in the effectiveness. Next slide. So that's what we've been working on, you know, thanks to this team, thanks to all of our staff, the, all the, the little small chart that you saw that Tina shared, there's a lot, you know, there's like hundreds of standard operating procedures and going through each one of them. It's a tedious, you know, each one of those submittal guidelines is a very tedious thing, but it needs to be done. And so I think we're really thankful, we have very talented staff who's engaged and involved at this point of, you know, making it part of their mindset of having that continuous improvement path. So that's what we're working on, but if you have any feedback for us about what we've shared today about the metrics, we want to hear. Next slide.
Councilmember Mertz?
Couple. Do we seek customer feedback? And do we have metrics associated with the evaluations that we get from our?
Great question. So that we, we put that in our next steps, but in your, we do an annual survey, but you know, you can take the survey, it's on the city's webpage, any applicant can take it anytime. When they get their permit, they're told, you can submit your comments, how we can do our, you know, serve you better here. But then we do an annual, we push out the survey to the applicants for that year. So generally in March, April, we pushed that one out. We did one about 10 days ago, we pushed it out to 300 people, there were 40 clicks, people that opened, 12 of them submitted. So on the city's dashboard, we measure how many, what percentage of applicants were satisfied with our service or very happy or very upset. So currently for 23 data, we're showing 76% were satisfied. With the new data that we pushed out, you know, we, about, for the, the people that did submit, it's about 83%. So people had to say good things about our inspector, inspectors, you know, so and so came to my field and they were very happy with the service they got from them. And they literally named them in their survey. So I look at that very carefully, I read every comment, I look at how, what feedback, you know, they have for us, because ultimately it's the service that folks are coming in and we want to hear from them.
And do we have a number that we want to hit? Is there a number that we, you know, think is, is sufficient and a number below which we don't want?
Sure, I think we're happy with 83%, but it, you know, we want more people to tell us where we're missing too. So, you know, the, so getting more people to give us the feedback. I've met, so generally the, the survey, you know, folks that really know the survey say people that are either very happy or very upset. You know, even companies like Google, they say you, you capture those, but you miss the people in the middle because they don't take the time to, to submit your, but they may have good feedback for us. So we don't per se have a metric, but the, you know, we can.
83 you like. And then the other question is, I always forget the name, oh, it's Wally's, whatever, National Association of City Managers, ICMA?
ICMA, yeah.
Yeah, does ICMA have guidelines for metrics to use in the evaluation of the permitting process?
Probably do, you know, we, we did the whole data, Andrea might have an opinion or more information, Dale? Yeah.
There's, there's all kinds of recommended metrics out there. And so that was one of the reasons why we wanted to hire Reftellis last year was to get their take on it. They'd work with cities all over the United States on how to improve permit processing. And so that's why we took, got some recommendations from them on metrics. They were able to kind of compile those best practices, and that, that's the list that we've been working off of to review.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Jiang?
A couple, I guess, thoughts on, you know, potential other metrics that we could track. So going back to the council president's point from earlier, you know, do we want to track, like, what's the number percent of application that are complete the first time to see if, you know, the SOPs are adequate and if people are reading them and they're clear? And then one of the other questions that I had was on, I think a couple of sites back, there was a breakdown, you know, number or percent of applications that are complete within two reviews versus more than two. Is it feasible or possible to disaggregate that between one and two and then more than two? Because, you know, obviously it would be great if it's all, you know, most of them can be complete within one versus two, or does it not make sense to disaggregate it more than we already have?
You know, we, we could, we've been living in this data world, sorry for bombarding you with all this data. The limitation is the system and the reporting that we can pull out. Emily, do you have a quick answer? Can we distinguish one and two? Yeah.
Emily's not mic'd, but just for those that might be listening, the goal was two, but it looks like they can disaggregate it for you, council member.
Thank you.
The council president?
Thank you. Yeah, when I'm thinking through, you know, first of all, love this. Second of all, I'm always looking back at that Reftellis report, because I think it gave us a really clear set of ideas of how we can improve the processes. And so when I'm looking at it, recommendation one and three, I think are my top areas where I think we can improve, and I think you mentioned that earlier. You know, we're receiving submittals that are not complete, and that causes problems. And then the number three is communicating to the applicant what the next steps are and what the feedback are. So thinking through potential metrics on that, I think the first one is, yes, I'd like to see what percentage of?
Answering, answering your phone. Oh, turning off the alarm.
Yep. What percentage of the applicants are complete, applications are complete on submittal? And then the next part, looking at, you know, are people understanding what the next steps are? I know there, there is a metric that you were looking at that was, you know, how long are you waiting on the applicant to respond? I wonder if there is a metric, or even if it just looks, makes sense to look at after you provide that detailed, you know, next steps, how long does it take them to follow up on that? That would indicate that you've made progress in that area.
Yes and no, because I think sometimes it's outside even the applicant's hand, because the consultant that they're working with is too booked. And even if they want to resubmit, they're not going to be able to get that stuff in. So a lot of times, you know, when I talk to applicants, they're feeling the pinch between the cities, you know, they can't get their permit from the city, but they're, the consultant's blaming the city, but you know, they really see it's, it's kind of like going both ways. So I'm not sure if that will be a measure for cities' time, perhaps not, is my first reaction to it. But then the bill also has, if the applicant takes more than 60 days, the city's timelines get extended. So we have to measure that somehow. It's, you know, measuring anything is a challenge, because I think these things aren't set up where there's an automatic click and, you know, we manually can't measure everything. So, but I think we have to come up with some sort of a report that when we send a correction letter out and 60 days have gone up, then the clock time for the city gets extended. So we'll look into that.
And I, I guess I would give the feedback of, I, I think it's more important to see progress and see that you're effective. I wouldn't want to put in a metric that is just there in order to answer a question one time. And so if you don't feel like that is an effective metric to understand whether or not you're making progress on that, that's fine, but I do think it's important particularly to look at whether or not the applicants feel like having, that they're getting detailed next steps and that they're able to thus respond more quickly and more completely.
Yeah, it gets, yeah, absolutely. I think we could do overall time and the city's time and do the subtraction like we showed you on one, and you know, that may be a way to kind of handle, you know, the total time that the applicant took, not just for each review, maybe that's easier for us to track. I think it's also a matter of, from the, from the applicant's side, you know, people have told me that, you know, they know they're not going to get approved in the first round, but they want to get in the line. So they want to turn something in just to see what kind of comments they're going to get from the city, because they know there's going to be a second round. So I think we have some, some of those systemic things that also come into play just from practical reality of what folks see, that it's not going to get approved in the first round. So they, let's just get, get half-finished product in, just to get in the queue. That happens, not all the time, but sometimes folks have told me, you know, we just submitted because we wanted to see what all you had to say.
Just a mini, a follow-up on Councilmember Jiang's question, maybe related to the answer that you just gave, and that is that a, handing in a complete package that meets all the requirements with one review is not necessarily a measurement of the clarity of your checklist or anything. It's also the experience and competency of the person who's doing the submitting. So is there a way when you're reporting how many one-time, you know, these ones were all one-time review, but these were two? Is there a way for you to clarify that there's a group of these that were a two or a three or a four because of a lack of, not just completeness, but even under, like, we get builders with all different kinds of experience. Sometimes it's their first project, sometimes they've never built in Washington State. Are you able to suss that out? I wouldn't want to be giving us a, a metric that was making it seem like what we're doing is your inform, your guidance is clear when it's actually, this is an experienced builder, this is an inexperienced builder.
Yeah, we want to see patterns, you know, each one can be a unique thing that comes into play, but I think with James, do you want to come share some examples? I think there have been examples for like the IBC versus the, go ahead.
James Gray, building official, love the conversation. So this is the stuff that we live in every day, and just a, just a little bit of a fine distinction, so we're talking about number of turnarounds of reviews and then sufficiency. And that's a number, that, that's a, the important distinction. So when you submit a set of plans, the first thing we have to do is, is look at it and say, is this, is this even complete for review? Did you give us structural calculations so we can see if the building is structurally sound? Sometimes we don't get that. So we have to do a process, and you actually have to do a pretty deep dive to figure out just if it's sufficient. So here's an example, we have, in, in Izicua, we have these critical areas, like a lot of cities have. So someone will come in for something and it will be in a critical area, like it'll have a, it'll be a coal mine region. Okay, it sounds really simple, but the coal mine seams are in very specific areas, as some of you probably know. So we can't just look at a map and say, well, it's in a coal mine region, so you have to do this particular thing. We have to get a, a, a third party, a peer reviewer, to review what the, what the applicant has submitted, to determine if that's even sufficient to, to review, before we put a whole bunch of time into it. Because we don't want to get into six weeks into the review process and then determine, hey, you did your, you gave us some stuff on coal mines, but you didn't tell us how deep they are, the type of footings you're putting in over the coal mines. So that's just a sufficiency piece. The other piece that I wanted to share is about how the applicant gets back to us and how many turnarounds it is. So remember that the regulations are getting more and more complex. And a lot of that is things that we, I would say we as a society is promulgating, because we want more efficient buildings, right? That's, that's our, our big, our big push is more green, energy-efficient buildings using less carbon resources. To do that, we're getting a smaller and smaller incremental gains. So as an example, the energy code has become so complex that if you build a commercial building today and you submit it to my team for review, it has to be modeled, all right, with computer modeling. And that model has to be checked with a computer model. So we don't have staff on board that can do a compute, to check your computer model. We have to have staff do that. It used to be you build a building and you put R19 in the walls and you put R38 in the lid and you do some, you know, your windows are a certain R value, and we call it good, that's prescriptive construction. We don't do that anymore. Now you, you put your building together, you put a bunch of heat into it, you put a bunch of cold into it in the summer, and we see how much squirts out of the holes. And, and that, that modeling is complex. So for someone to come, to come back and get that right in one round of review, it's, it's a, it's a tall order often.
Councilmember Hall, and then Councilmember Jiang?
So the example you were just giving about the coal mine, so coal region, would us having questions and it bouncing back to them, does that count as one cycle of review? Like, I'm looking at the list of potential criteria in the back of the Reftellis report, and it talks about cycles of review. So is that one cycle of review, or is it by touch? Like, that would be one, two?
No, it's one cycle.
That's one full cycle.
It's, it's not a linear thing. So when we get an application, if there's geotechnical issue, it'll go to a geotechnical peer review, it'll simultaneously go to James' team, to the engineering team, and to the planners. It happens at the same time, so that's one round. For everyone gets to see the first round together, not linearly waiting for one team to be done, if that's your question.
Yeah, that's, okay, thanks.
Councilmember Jiang? Oh, sorry.
We also have to determine if the designer gets all of those disciplines in that one round, right? So the, so in that one round, there's land uses looking at it for very complex. complex land use standards, and energy standards, and structural standards, and the coal, coal mine. Everybody's taking a punch at it, but that one designer that submitted it has to get all of that stuff. So.
Yeah. And, you know, part of it is the learning curve. I mean, the energy code was new. So I think the, the architects and the, you know, the people that are on the applicant's side are also kind of getting up to speed. But the other example that I, I think often comes up is for the interior tenant improvements, there's the IBC code, and then there's the IEBC. And so, you know, majority of the people forget to verify the IEBC. And so my question to James was, shouldn't we educate all the architects and engineers that, why are we missing this? You know, so we're constantly looking for, are there patterns that we can address the root cause, not just the, you know, they, they missed it. But if 100% of the people are missing it, then something's not, you know, right. And the other part, I think, is just the communication. The way we write up our comments, is that very clear and succinct and understandable on the applicant's side, or are they just missing the point? I think that's part of the Raftelis recommendation also, and the communication piece.
Councilmember Jiang.
Yeah, thank you. So I have some questions on the energy code because that kind of raised my interest. So I'm curious, like, the requirement to do an energy model, is that a state energy code requirement or local?
We adopt the, the code that's by State Building Code Council.
Okay.
So we don't have our own amendments, other than the FIRE. We, we adopt City of Bellevue's because we have a common response from them. But it's all the State Building Code Council.
Yeah. Okay. And then my other question is, so you said the state, or we have to verify the energy model, like, because my understanding, and typically where I've seen it elsewhere, is like, you know, some accredited, you know, company, like some PE will sign off on the energy model. Is that something that, and similarly, like with structural, like, is, does the city have a structural engineer, like, double-check the work of the structural engineers in the?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so a lot, a lot there to unpack. On the, on the energy code side, we don't have a, we don't have someone that, that, that does an energy code analysis with an energy code software, right? So we have a third party that, that does that. But for instance, your energy code package might have a certain type of light in it, for the, for the lighting piece of it. But the amount of coverage of that light is not enough to, to, you've got to delve down into, into each one of those little pieces. And, and that's, that's what the comments come back at. It's, it's not like that we're asking, is it red and it should be blue? It's more, the issues are more black and white. On the, on the structural side, so we, we have, I'm a, I'm a PE, we have a couple more PEs that work in our department. But on the really complex structural stuff, like the Costco buildings we just finished, we talk about that pretty often, we're going to outsource something like that because they're very, they're, they're, they're much more complex, and they also take computer modeling software to check them.
Councilmember Jiang, I heard a different question in there. We, it sounds like what we're doing in practice is verifying, but I thought your question was, does the law require you to verify, or are we choosing to verify?
Yeah, certainly. Mayor, good question. What we, what we do in plan review is we're doing a code check. We're not actually doing, we're not checking your design. We're, we're checking what the, what the code specifies. So the code specifies these minimums, and designers design to a, a different set. It's what the owners want, and it's what the, what the public wants for that particular building. But we're, we're just checking for code.
I guess my question is like, so, for example, for my company, you know, we do, like, reviews of solar systems for our clients. And we, we look to see, you know, did, did a structural engineer say that this roof will structurally support solar? We're not, like, verifying their calculations. So I'm just curious, like, is what you're doing, you know, double-checking their calculations, and is that something that you're legally required to do on the structural side? And then, yeah, then I'll ask about the energy.
We do. We do. And we find errors. So, so we, for instance, on a, on a home, with something that we can do a hand check on, somebody has a beam over a window. I've looked at this many, many times. So I, I see a point load coming down on that beam. I'm like, gosh, it's a, it's a four by 10. It's got a big span. It doesn't quite look right. We'll run it out, maximum bending moment, WL squared or eight, and figure out what the, what the bending modulus is, right? And we find errors.
James, I think, I think the question isn't about, are we checking it, or why? It's, does the law say we have to check it?
It, it does. It's all in the, it's in the, in the building code. Chapter 16 of the building code specifies what we have to look for. And, and actually, our, our Isaguas municipal code in chapter 1604, 110, specifies what we have to look for in plans. They have to, they have to have the, the minimum requirements of the structural, mechanical, electrical, all, all those pieces.
Go ahead. Did you have additional on energy?
Yeah, I guess so then, then similarly, on the energy code, we have to do a similar level of verification, which requires, you know, doing an energy model ourselves to verify the applicant's energy model? Is that, is my understanding correct?
Correct. And unfortunately, we often find errors.
Mostly, it's like you have to meet certain points. But there could be multiple ways to meet the points. And they, the designer chooses, this is the path that they want to take. We're not arguing whether the path that they chose is correct or not, but did the, did those add up to what the code requires you to, to provide? I think that's at a more simpler level.
Is that getting to it?
I think I have some homework to do in looking at the code and seeing if I have more detailed questions.
That's great. Councilmember Joe, and anybody else wishing to speak, because I do want to get them to go through their next steps as well. Okay, Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On your other metric slide, you talked about, it's 1926. You talked about assesses efficiency and effectiveness, and improve decision-making. And, and I think those are two things you're focused on that are, are central to this. I work with a water district in an undisclosed location that, you know, doesn't communicate back with the people that are applying, that they even received the application, and that it's complete, because water districts are not under 5290 yet. Could you talk a little bit about, I, I heard that for decision-making, you don't have necessarily a, a straight line of people that need to approve something, but you have people on duty that may be able to answer questions and keep a application moving forward without having specific people there because of vacations or absences, et cetera. Could you expand on that a little bit more so we can have a better picture of how you're increasing efficiency and effectiveness through that application process?
Sure. So I think what the example we were giving was, our permit center is open Monday through Friday, 9 to 4 p.m. So each staff member from each of their teams is on duty that day. So for any walk-ins that come in, you know, we want to provide the service that they can get, talk to a live person. If there's a phone call that they're calling in, we also have an ability for people to schedule acuity meetings, and so on and so forth. So, so they're already, they know that that, for that particular day, but they cycle through, right? So we have, you know, four planners that lead, each pick a day. So one's here on Monday, then another one's Tuesday, Thursday. They know the day they're on duty. They are going to be interrupted with phone calls, with walk-ins, and assistance of that nature. But it's one day a week. The rest of the day, they can focus on their other pieces. So for that day, the permit texts that are under James do the intake and issuance and fee pieces to, of the permitting software. So they touch it first, and they touch it the last, and, and route it and all that kind of stuff. So when, when the permit texts have taken the stuff from mybuildingpermit.com, they have it loaded on their two monitors and screen. They're trying to figure out, is it ready for me to stamp, create the Blue Beam session, do all of that kind of stuff, and route it. Sometimes, majority of the 80%, they can make the call, it's complete. Sometimes it's really not clear. It's labeled this, but they're not quite sure, is this a structural set or not? In those cases, we wanted the, the team members that are on duty that day to be able to assist them on their call. So that saves them time, so they don't have to close it, send an email, wait for a response, go some other day, that they have it all open, that they should be able to make that call. If they need help, we should be able to provide help to them to make that call.
And I appreciate the cross-training that I, I think I'm hearing within your department. And as we look at the facilities and how we're going to have a new city hall, or some mini city hall, or whatever we decide to do, I think the model that you have, that you've developed, can help us as we try to hone down the number of people that might be in the office, but still improve the efficiency and the quality of service that we're providing. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any more questions at this time? It won't be the end of questions. It's just questions at this time. And if not, I will have Minnie go through the next steps.
Yeah, this is real quick. So, you know, we'll continue to analyze the survey data that we talked about, and all these performance measures. We have this target date of end of quarter two for at least getting the first big push for getting all of those recommendations in place. We plan to recruit and fill the permit coordinator position by July. And then we'll come back to council in September with the progress report. That's what we're thinking, but we're happy to adjust whatever you think.
And we're back to questions. Any additional questions? I had some great ones already. Okay, Minnie, I'm not seeing anything. Want to thank you for bringing so many of the team members here today, including borrowed Tina Eggers from the executive office. Nice to get that report and see what you're working on. There's a lot going on.
Thank you.
Okay, so as a reminder, there is no action for this tonight. This was just an informational update. We're going to move into good of the order. I have a couple of meeting announcements, and I believe Deputy Counsel President De Michele and I have a little update on a convening that was held this morning. So I'll go through the dates and put up your microphone if you've got something else. Monday, March 31st is a special city council meeting with the Isaguas School District Board of Directors. It will be at 6:00 p.m. at the Holly Street Early Learning Center, and dinner is going to be catered by El Cafe, Liberty High's, Liberty High School's culinary program. Monday, April 17th is a regular city council meeting, and the anticipated agenda items are Light Rail Stationery Vision and Guiding Principles, City Council Vacancy Process Debrief. Okay, good, good of the order. If I'm not seeing anything, I'll introduce Barb and hand it over to you. As was mentioned at the council retreat by both Councilmember Joe and Deputy Counsel President, this is a very uniquely difficult, challenging time again. So for the second time in five years, we're finding ourselves in a situation where things are changing very rapidly. At the federal level, we're hearing financial crisis at the state level, at the county level. And you did your own belt tightening last year as you looked at your projected revenues and expenditures. It has a lot of different groups within our community anxious and nervous for different reasons. So during the retreat, Deputy Counsel De Michele and Councilmember Joe both suggested whether or not there was an opportunity to convene the Human Services nonprofit group. During COVID, there were some coalitions that were formed amongst different service providers that were super helpful. And so I think the hope is here. You know, the city doesn't have the staff, the city doesn't have the budget to take on organization of an outside group. But we definitely can use our time as electeds to help with convenings where these participants in this particular sector see value and continue themselves. So what we learned today with this first convening was, the attendance was overwhelming. Way more organizations showed up than we expected. It went on 45-minute, was it going to be a 45-minute or an hour-long one? It went on for, I'm thinking about 90 minutes. I actually had to step out myself at the end. And with one of our council candidates, Tina Hayes, also participating kind of to document sort of the state of what was going on, the check-in is going to yield a lot of good information. I don't, I don't have the direct data to share, but the questions were asked, what federal funding have you lost? What federal funding is at risk? And what have you not heard about in terms of federal funding that's a possibility for you in 2025? What percentage of your overall budget is this? And the answers were so widely variable that we will be sending you the spreadsheet that shows you. And that after the state budget drops, this group would like to convene again, because there will be a little more clarity around additional cuts besides just federal program interruptions, additional cuts that may impact services. And that potentially throughout this entire year, this group should convene once a quarter just to talk about the changes that are ongoing. We're not thinking stabilization is coming anytime soon. We're thinking chaos is going to be 2025. Councilmember De Michele took some very brief summary notes that she can share with you right now. But when we get the data, we'll help. There's other groups in town that also want to have convenings. We have employees in, we have residents in town who've been let go from federal employment, and they have a unique set of needs that they'd like to sit down and talk about. So I see this as kind of, this is the work that the electeds will be doing in the community throughout the year, and then sharing back here. Councilmember De Michele.
Yeah. Whoops, there we go. Thank you, Mayor Polly. And, yeah, we had a really excellent discussion, and Mayor Polly did a fantastic job of leading the discussion and probing the comments so that we got really good nuanced information from people. I counted 16 agencies, and several of the agencies brought more than one representative.
Two people, yep.
So we had well over 20, 22 people on the line during the, the process. So what I'm going to give you is a really high-level of what we heard. This is what I shared with them at the end, that I had, that I had heard. The first thing that we heard is that some agencies are already feeling the impacts of federal and state decisions, either in their budgets or with their clients. So it's, it wasn't the majority that are doing that, but it certainly was a significant group of people who are already feeling the impacts. Second thing is that all agencies, everybody that we talked to, or talked to us, said that they are feeling the impacts of threat and disruptions, threatened funding losses, or threatened impacts with their clients. So everybody is on high alert. They're, they're watching what's going, going on, and they are anticipating that something is going to happen sooner rather than later. And the third thing we heard from more than one is that in Isaguas, there is an ecosystem of care, so that what happens to one agency or one client can ripple across several agencies. But we also felt like the ecosystem can be a strength going into the future because there are lots of connections between our nonprofits that provide human services, especially as many of them care for the same people that are in different agencies or being served by different agencies. Four, it was really clear, unfortunately, that there are specific populations that are already feeling severe repercussions, and our hearts go out to them. We heard some heartbreaking stories already today. And we won't go into details, but you'll get more details when you see the spreadsheet that we're going to share with you. And then finally, the human services employees are really feeling stress and anxiety about the future right now, and about their, their jobs. Because just like everybody else, as this rolls down, different agencies, different human service providers may have to cut their workforce in response to what is happening in other places. So we got many thank yous.
Yeah.
You weren't there to hear, hear them.
I heard a few when I was in it.
People felt very good about being heard, about being able to share, and everyone nodded yes that they would like to meet again.
Yeah, there was big, just like during COVID, big consensus that this is a difficult time for many people for different reasons. But they need a place to go and talk, and they need a place to bounce ideas off of, and to perhaps form new connective tissue that didn't exist before in their particular sector. So it was good, but it was very hard to listen to. And I just think that's what this kind, this year is going to be. So really appreciate the Councilmember De Michele being there. And like I said, we'll report out, I think the big takeaway was that people need to be heard right now. And I don't, I don't think there's any way that, we can't do enough listening right now. I mean, we could listen 24 hours a day, and people are still not going to feel heard. So as much as you can, I would just encourage people, not only the electeds that are sitting here, but people in our community, to recognize that there is a big need out there right now due to the uncertainty. It's causing enormous anxiety. And the best thing we can do in most cases right now is to find out where it's happening, and listen, and talk about. to find out where it's happening, and listen, and talk about, you know, ways the community itself, all of us, can come together and try and help. Yeah, so, yeah, it was good. And any more Good of the Order? Not seeing it. There is no executive session this evening, so we are adjourned at 9:30.